I'd like to call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll have the presentation of the flag and the, what do you do? The pledge of allegiance to Irwin, and we want to thank Irwin High School, who is instructed by Chief Tony Gutierrez. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's now time for the superintendent's comments.
Madam Chair, along with the start of a new school year, a new academic semester is just around the corner, at least for our high schools. And prior to the holiday break, as we can recall, especially if you step outside right now, we had some inclement weather. It caused us three straight days of district, school-wide closures. That was December 10th, December 11th, and December 12th. And a reminder that we have announced makeup for those days, and that will include the conversion of, this coming Tuesday, January 22nd, it will be converted from a teacher workday to a regular student attendance day. And the 22nd is currently projected to also be the first day for the new academic semester, again for our high schools. And to support our high school staff into allowing them to close out the old semester and then transition to the new semester, Friday, January 18th, will become a two-hour early dismissal. The end of course exams, you might be interested, especially parents of high school students, they're projected to actually begin in a few of our high schools Monday, with the majority beginning on Tuesday of next week. And we've sent that, also that notification to Mother Nature as well. On a separate note, the use of the two makeup days from the end of the calendar, that has shifted the final student day attendance date to June the 11th. And it's important to remember that that is subject to change as we certainly have a majority of the winter season still ahead of us. And in closing, just a reminder to all that the state calendar requirements allow a maximum of 185 days and a minimum of 1,025 instructional hours. That legally completes a school year. So we have a maximum and a minimum. As we make future decisions and as we've made decisions on the calendar over the past several years, it's important to keep in mind that our students and our schools, their performance are compared to school districts statewide. And school districts in the eastern part of the state historically have less impact on winter weather, although certainly the flood had a horrible impact on a number of our fellow sister systems in the east this year. On Thursday, January 24th, we are planning a ribbon cutting to open the new Buncombe County School Aquatic Center and a 10-lane pool that will serve to host our high school swim teams in both practices and competitive meets, as well as other competitive and non-competitive swimmers in the area. And following that ceremony, on the 24th, we will be having the annual countywide swim meet that will take place there at the new facility. I want to thank our county commissioners and our outstanding partners at the YMCA for their support in just making this project a reality. It is the dream of every school superintendent to be open, to be able to open a swimming pool. So how fortunate I am. My hope is that in the near future, all kidding aside, that this center will be a host site for teaching water safety skills to elementary school students across our entire district. Wouldn't that be wonderful, Nathan? If every student in Buncombe County was drown-proofed through, through the availability of this facility. We also are fortunate in that our key partner, the YMCA, actually has a national model program that does just that and has tremendous, has had tremendous success across the country in North Carolina, especially in Wake County. So that is, that is certainly a dream and a vision that I hope comes to fruition. A quick reminder to the board and to the public, to our stakeholders, that mid-year graduation ceremony is scheduled for February 2nd at 11 o'clock in the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. And Ms. Swanger, I think it's still too early to actually get a number of graduates, but I will tell you, how many years now is this with our mid-year? We're moving into about 13. That has been a key, key graduation initiative incentive. It has helped to reduce our dropout rate. And each year, I believe we've seen a steady increase for a number of reasons. Not only students that need that additional fifth semester, but in many cases, it offers our, our high flyers an opportunity to graduate in mid-year and then move on to the college ranks or actually get some experience, global experience, or get some experience in the, in the work field. So I hope everyone can attend that. In closing, I want to leave you with a very short video that's produced by our Cracker Jack Communications Team, and it includes some future screen stars. So pay very close attention. You will want these performers' autographs before they graduate Buncombe County Schools, if that gives you any hint. And this highlights the virtues of kindergarten in Buncombe County Schools. District and elementary school staff are currently reaching out to parents of rising kindergarteners across the county. So let, let it fly, Stacia.
I like learning at school.
I like to hang out with my friends because they're nice to me.
My favorite thing about school is making new friends.
And when we go outside, we all play Ninjas.
My favorite part of class is that I learn to read.
In class, we color and write.
Oh, sometimes I plant on different iPad and then I trace the, the letters.
In class, we're learning about animals.
Penguins can swim in water.
I learned that penguins have beaks.
They live in the cold.
In school, I learned how to spell cat, C-A-T.
My favorite thing about kindergarten is, precess!
And that concludes my statements, Madam Chair.
At this time, Ms. Harris, we have some good news.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Kristi Cheek. She's our former CTE Director and longtime BCS employee who recently retired. To help us, I'd like to invite Mr. Nathan Ramsey up to the podium. He's the Director of the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, which serves Buncombe, Henderson, Madison, and Transylvania Counties. And before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Senator Terry Van Dyne, who's here tonight, and Drew Christie, he's the Director of the Governor's Western Office. They're all here to help us recognize Christie and her years of service to the students of Buncombe County.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to recognize Kristi Cheek for the amazing work that she has done for not only Buncombe County Schools, but for our entire region. I've been blessed since the time I've been workforce director to work for five of the most amazing CTE Directors in the five school systems in our, in our region. And certainly, we were disappointed when Christie retired, but Christie had made such a great impact, not only to students and families, but to so many employers throughout our region. Because our employers always keep saying, "We've got to get into the schools. We've got to reach into the schools to tell young people about the careers that are available." And they find out, they get into the high schools, and then they really say, "We need to get it in the middle schools." And, you know, then they find out really, "We need to get it in elementary schools." So those students in kindergarten, they have much more talent than I do, and I think I need to go back to kindergarten, so maybe I can be as good as them. But, you know, growing up, there was a television show. It was called Wonder Woman. And when I think of Christie, I think of a Wonder Woman. Because Christie is so amazing about bringing people together. Not only that she had the technical competence to do this job, she, the passion that she has for the students of Buncombe County and our community was so overwhelming. And I would always, if I'd sent out a late-night email, Christie would be the one, within five minutes, you know, it was after 11 o'clock, you know, Christie would respond. Because Christie never stopped. She's, she is the Energizer Bunny in, in many respects. And if you look at some of the employers throughout Buncombe County, whether it's students at work, whether it's the, the CTE Fair at the U.S. Sailor Center, whether it's helping out-of-school youth, you know, Christie's passion was, and I think we all need to understand this, that, you know, there are many paths to success. And for students, you know, learning does not stop when you earn your high school diploma. Learning does not stop when you go into higher education and earn some type of degree. Learning is truly a lifetime effort. And she really was a great advocate for the career in technical education. And so, we know she was very good, but, you know, she also was recognized as one of the best in the entire nation. And so, we have a great honor today to have the governors, Governor Roy Cooper's Western Representative with us, Drew Christie, and Senator Van Dyne was able to be with us. I know our other legislators would like to be here as well, but they did not have as fast of a car as Senator Van Dyne. But I will turn the presentation over to them, and they have a special recognition for Ms. Cheek.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to bring greetings from Governor Roy Cooper. Christie, he wishes he could be here, but unfortunately, Raleigh got him tied up. The governor had asked me to present you an award tonight. It is the highest civilian honor, highest civilian honor award that any person in the state could receive. It's the Order of Longleaf Pine. Christie, if you could please join myself and Senator Van Dyne.
Christie can join the fraternal order of people that can get to say, "Here's to the land of Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the Old North State." Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. I hope I don't have to recite that, like, really quickly, because I can't do that. Hopefully, there's a crib sheet right there. There is. So coming back here is coming home, and I certainly appreciate you. I will try not to cry, but you all know I can't do that because you all know me. And I want to thank you because it truly is a passion for me to make sure that people know what's out there for them. And for me, and you all, you're still home and you're still family. And I do appreciate that. One of the things that nobody ever can take away from somebody is their education. And everybody needs to continue learning, no matter what. And it is important for kindergarten students. It is important for our middle school, our high school, our intermediate school. No matter when you learn, you have to continue learning. I have had such great time to reflect over what we are and what we've done. I've heard amazing stories from parents about how great our teachers are, our faculty and our staff, and what Buncombe County Schools brings to each other and what it's brought to this community. It does take a village, it takes a great community. We live in an awesome place. But we are an awesome school system that does great things for this community. And our community grows and flourishes because of this. And that is who we are. That is what we were called to do, and that's what we're called to do every day. So up there, you all are part of this. You all give your heart and soul every day. You all are the reason this happens. I don't do this alone, you know that. I call on you immensely, and called on you immensely a lot. And Nathan's right, yes, sometimes it was at 11 o'clock. And I remember one night, Greg, in maintenance, he said, "Christie, stop emailing late. I forgot to turn my sound off on my phone, and it keeps ringing." So, but it's a dedication and a calling, and us in education know it well. And my heart bleeds education, and I hope that no matter what, my mom always said, "No one can take your education away." So be a lifelong learner and make sure, no matter what. I'm so proud my kids were able to go through Buncombe County Schools. I'm so proud that Cody is teaching at Irwin and doing such a great job. He loves that. He is a model. His dad, he knew it from the day he was born, he was going to do that. And so, we've had great success here. You are phenomenal, and I'm very thankful for what you've allowed me to do. I am a CTE person, I'm dedicated to the craft, and I'm just very appreciative of everything. You are phenomenal. So, thank you.
To be able to pull this over on Christie Cheek. It took people from wrong. You know, Greg, Chris- She's taking her husband with her. Good to see you.
Wave at him from the door, Christie. Wave at him.
I told Christie that Charles Corral used to say that, now probably, there's not many people in this room that knows who that man is. But he used to say that all the time on his, on his program on CBS. Do you know who Charles Corral?
Yes, I do.
That was just a test. All right, at this time, we have the curriculum feature.
Yes, Madam Chair, fellow board members, Dr. Baldwin. We thought it might be of importance for you all to have an update on our people. As you know, your budget allot's 85% of your dollars to people. And we know how much people matter to our, our children and our schools. So Brian Probst and Cynthia Lopez are going to give you an update on the workforce and certainly part of your strategic plan that we are working on daily. You will see a mid-year update once we finish first semester and we continue to update this. So we'll get that information to you probably in the next month. So, welcome Cynthia and Brian.
I wondered why Brian was here. You know, he doesn't grace us with his presence very often.
Not often.
In a necktie.
Well, once a year. And I can attest to Christie's mentorship over the years as a young CTE teacher. She was great to me. All right, we're booting up here. Got a black screen. I'm a tech guy. I guess if I turn the computer on, that would help. And it's going to ask me for the password. Let me pull up Barry's email. Course is shut down.
Notice, I'm not running to help him because I don't know anything here.
Here we go. Well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, board members, and audience guests. My name's Brian Probst. I'm the HR Information Systems Manager of Buncombe County Schools. And tonight, I'm going to share the state of our current BCS workforce and compare it to some previous years. So each of you have a handout with a lot of data on it. I'm going to highlight most of it in graphs, nice colorful graphs. So what we have on the screen right now is our SS 200 Full-Time Employee Data, which is a report that we turn in every year to DPI that highlights our full-time staff. So let's talk about some of our employee counts and makeup. Between 2012 and 2016, looking at these graphs, you'll see that we had a steady decline in staff. But then over the next three years, up to present day, it's leveled out. So for our current year, if I couple the full-time staff along with the part-time staff, you'll see that we have a total of 3,758 total employees. Additionally, we have 650 substitute teachers and about 500 other temporary as-needed staff. That would include interpreters, tutors, coaches, et cetera. So next, here's the gender makeup percentages, which have been pretty consistent over the past seven years. 75% female, 25% male. Next, I'd like to share some of the degree levels of our permanent employees who hold an educator's certificate. So on this graph, notice, you'll see for the bachelor's portion on the left side of the screen, a slight increase by about, I'm sorry, slight decrease by 4% over the number of educators who hold a sole bachelor's degree level over the last seven years. But our master's degree, you'll see a slight 3% increase in the number of educators that hold an additional master's degree over the same time period. The same shift also appears with the increased number of educators holding an advanced or doctorate degree. And these increases are despite a provision in North Carolina law that was eliminated in 2013 that gave a 10% raise to educators with a graduate degree. So both of those are going up. All right, let's talk about beginning teachers. So for our beginning teachers who are in their first, their second, or their third year of teaching, we hit a seven-year high back in 2015, and BTE numbers have decreased, actually, over the last few years. One reason is the recent enrollment decline in the UNC system, teacher education programs. In fact, there was a 30% decline in enrollment between 2010 and 2015. So we're kind of just getting to that ripple effect after they've graduated. Another contributing factor is Buncombe County Schools hires more out-of-state experienced educators now than ever before. So of the educators that BCS has hired in the last three years, this chart shows the colleges and universities where our beginning teachers have earned their degrees. So note, this is only the top 10. In Buncombe County, beginning teachers have earned their degree from over 70 institutions. All right, so here's the 2019 breakdown of the licensed staff and the total years' experience. So on the next few slides, I'm going to break down the seven-year trend and shift. So this pie graph shows the percentages of how many years of experience our educators had in 2013. And then this is going to be 2015. We did it every other year, 2015. And 2017. And currently, in 2019. Looks like a Trivial Pursuit here. So let's go back to 2013 and look at our educators with less than 10 years of experience. So we're just going to be focusing on the purple and yellow wedges here. So in 2013, collectively, these newer educators made up about 42% of our workforce, licensed staff workforce. So it went from 42% in 2013 to now 37%. So it's decreased. Now let's look at our educators with more than 25 years of experience, so these orange and red wedges. So in 2013, collectively, these career educators made up 17% of our licensed staff workforce. And now today, in 2019, this group has decreased to 13%, which only leads us to one conclusion. So if we look at our educators between 10 and 24 years of experience, the blue, gray, and green wedges, collectively in 2013, this group made up 41%, and now it is 50%. So the conclusion is that this middle group of educators is expanding while the two ends of the spectrum, the newer educators and the career educators, are decreased, have decreased. So on to some National Board information. BCS proudly ranked 17th in the nation for National Board Certified Teachers. And we rank fourth in North Carolina for National Board Teachers. Ben Rickard in the Communications Department actually just published an article on this on the website. It's under News and Stories. And so finally, our teacher turnover rate. Let me go over some numbers here. BCS had a rise in attrition between 2013 and 2015. We went from 9.5 to a seven-year high of 13.6%. And then it leveled out between 2016 and 2018, and our current turnover rate is 12.1%. Comparing this to North Carolina average turnover rate, it kind of took the same highs and lows throughout the period. And currently, North Carolina's turnover rate, the state average, is 13.3%. So BCS turnover rate has consistently been lower than the statewide average. And just finally, a few comparisons to some surrounding LEAs based on their attrition data. Yancey's was the lowest last year at 7%. McDowell, 8.9%. Madison, 9.8%. Haywood County was 11.1%. Rutherford, 11.5%. Henderson, just below us, was at 11.9%. Transylvania, 14.1. And Asheville City's off this chart, relatively speaking, at 20.7. Of course, this data can shift, you know, quite a bit from year to year. So at this time, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those before I pass it over to Ms. Lopez.
Could you share that PowerPoint with us?
I sure can.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So don't go far so you can time me to make sure I don't take too much time.
We did pretty good.
Okay. All right, so even though our turnover rate is, has gone down some in the past few years, it's still an area of concern for us. And you cannot, you know, I don't seem to go very many days without reading about the teacher shortages across the country and in North Carolina. And in my professional organization, I hear about it all the time. And I think it's much worse in other areas of the state than it is for us. We're very fortunate here. And I know this group of folks that I talked to a lot in the summer about hiring will tell you that sometimes we are, we are seeing maybe not the same quality, if not the same quantity, that we have in the past. And so, it is an area- And so it is an area of concern for us, and it is something that is part of our strategic plan, as Ms. Swanger says. One of the goals for academic excellence is that we recruit, retain, recruit, train, and retain highly effective educators. So to that end, our HR department has for many years had a recruiting team. We pull together a group of folks every year and kind of brainstorm about what we can do within our modest budget. And so we attend regional and state job fairs. We shifted some. We have in prior years, looked, gone out of state some and gone, and then the next year, we'll measure that, has that been effective? And so we've really tried to measure what we're doing. We've gotten the most bang from our buck from our regional universities. And I think one of Mr. Probst's slides showed that. And so we will continue to attend those job fairs. And then we also collaborate with our local RESA and attend the Mountain Teacher Job Fair. All of the districts in the West attend that, and that's always been an excellent job fair for Buncombe County Schools. But we also use social media. And our Communications Department does a great job about, with marketing and talking about the great things that we're doing, helping us maintain a very interactive website so that it makes it easy for folks to find out what's going on in our system and how to apply for jobs. And then the past few years, we've used virtual job fairs. We've actually sat in the office and connected with people who can't travel here and told them about the virtues of coming to Buncombe County Schools. And that has been somewhat effective. Another part of the recruiting team's job is to look at diversity as well. We recognize that we would like for our workforce to match our student population in terms of diversity. And so every year, we think about ways that we can increase diversity in our workforce. Several years ago, under the leadership of Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Swanger, we joined the Buncombe County, or WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition, which is a networking group of local employers, mostly public employers. It's the city of Asheville, the county of Buncombe, UNCA, AB Tech, Mission Hospital. And their focus is diversity, equity, and inclusion, and employment, mostly unemployment. And so we are a member of that organization, have tried to participate in some of their training and that sort of thing to help us. And we do have, next month, I think it is, at the end of next month, we have one of their members coming to speak to our principals about the hiring process and what we can do to try and over some of those cultural barriers and biases that keep us from maybe hiring more diverse folks into our system. The local supplement, I would say that if you ask me to say the most important thing that we do above and beyond having an excellent school system to help us recruit and retain folks, it's that local supplement. And so everybody who had a part of that, boy, I thank you for that. It does make a difference. And just proof, this week, this was an article in the Haywood County Mountaineer. I think the title of the article was "Curbing the Loss of Teachers." And so just, this is a paragraph from that article, that they're recognizing that every year, they're losing a bunch of teachers to us and to Asheville City. And that's because of the money. And our supplement, I think it said, was 50% higher than their highest supplement. And that's not at all levels. So we really appreciate our local supplement and think it absolutely makes a difference. The other things that we do in Buncombe County, you know, we have our teacher housing, which has also made a difference and helped some because of our high cost of living, our support of beginning teacher program, the professional development opportunities that are offered through our curriculum department. Our wonderful leaders, and as Ms. Cheeks said, our awesome school system. But I'll also say, location, location, location. When I go out recruiting, if we don't have a big sign that says Asheville, then we're losing out on folks because Asheville certainly helps us recruit folks to come to our area. And like Mr. Probst said, you know, we are depending more because of the decline in folks going through teacher education programs, depending more on those out-of-state applicants to come in and fill some of our vacancies. And the location really makes a difference there. So now, and you may end up hating me for this, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the challenges we face with licensure. And it fits into this because it's, I feel like it is overall a challenge in terms of our ability to recruit and retain folks. Licenseur, and that is getting a teaching license for a teacher, is a challenging endeavor in North Carolina. And there have been a lot of efforts made by HR folks, by superintendents. And we've, you know, we're still working on it. We're not making the progress that we would like to make. But a couple of things that I just want to put on your radar about the licensure process. Number one, a few years ago, North Carolina decided to make the licensing exam for elementary teachers more rigorous because the states that had this more rigorous exam had higher NAEP scores. And so they put in place a reading foundations test and a math test, both provided by the Pearson Corporation. And since that has been in place, a number of teachers have struggled, who want to be elementary teachers or special ed teachers, have struggled to pass that math Pearson exam. We've struggled with it here in Buncombe County, across the region. RESA tried to put in some helps in place by offering staff development to those folks. But this was an article just last month from the Charlotte paper, and I think it was also in the Raleigh paper, that 2,000 North Carolina teachers failed that exam. And every time they take that exam, I mean, I just imagine you're out of school, you take, you pay a couple of hundred dollars to take your licensing exam, and then you fail a portion of it, where you have to keep going back and taking it over and over again. And every time they take it, it costs $100. And that doesn't include the prep course that they might have to pay to take. So it has been a significant issue in our state. Well, this week, the State Board of Education heard a report about how we need to get rid of that exam. And this article, the Charlotte article, is a great article if you get the opportunity to read it. But that article points out that there was a study done that has shown that teachers who pass that math exam, which is high-level math, is, you know, what you might teach in a high-level math course in high school, even though they're teaching elementary ed, that they are not getting better test scores. There's no correlation between passing that exam on the first try and their effectiveness in the classroom. So that was a welcome study, the State Board. I tried to listen in on the audio stream this week, trying, still trying to get more information about what the discussion was at the State Board level. But I am hopeful that in the next couple of months, we're going to see that the State Board is going to allow us to go back to the Praxis Math Test, which is much better aligned with the licensure area. So be on the lookout for that. Another challenge that we have had that just kind of doesn't make sense in licensure has been with our out-of-state teachers. They have been required to meet, even if they go through a teacher education program and they pass all the exams in that state and they teach for 20 years and they come to North Carolina, in many cases, they still have to pass our exams. And, you know, I think that it hasn't been a real hindrance to folks coming here because I think they don't really realize it until they get here. They think, oh, I have a, you know, a teaching license, I'll be able to get a job in North Carolina. But then once they get here, they receive a letter from DPI that says, oh, you have three years, but you've got to pass this test. And for example, we hired a teacher this summer from Florida, 20 years of experience. He's working in one of our elementary schools, but he has to take those exams that I talked about for elementary ed and pay for them out of pocket. So this, too, was something that was before the State Board today. And so we're hopeful that North Carolina will say, you know, if you've been through a program in another state and you passed whatever test they had in place, you ought to be able to teach in North Carolina. Let us hire, let us check references, let us, you know, look at it from an employment standpoint and give them a license when they come to North Carolina. So hopefully, we'll see some action on that. Another thing that's getting ready to happen is the elimination of lateral entry. You may be aware that lateral entry is if someone didn't go through a traditional teacher education program but majored in science and then decide that they want to go become a science teacher. Lateral entry allows them to go into the classroom and teach currently while they go back to school and take courses. And they can actually affiliate with, go to our Regional Alternative Licensing Center and they, if they need a methods class or, you know, any type of pedagogy class, they can take classes kind of here and there. They don't have to go to a university and affiliate. They might be able to get some classes at RESA and classes at AB Tech. And so it is, they're given three years to get those classes so that they can become fully licensed. Well, our ability to do that ends this June. And folks, as long as they get started by June, they will have until 2020. But if they come to us in July, they will not be eligible for a lateral entry license. So we have this new thing, and it's called a residency license. And I understand the rationale, and that is that there was a study a few years ago that showed that lateral entry teachers were not as effective as teachers who went through a university traditional program. So I understand that, and I can't really fight with that study, but I will say this will provide a challenge to us. This year, we hired 17 lateral entry teachers. And I don't think that we'll be able to hire that many with the residency requirement. So what residency does, basically, it's if you have a bachelor's degree and you've completed relevant coursework, like you majored in science or math, or you pass the licensing exam, you can still get a license, but you must go to an educator preparation program, which is basically a university, an affiliate with that university, be enrolled actively in their programs, and before you can get the job. And there are also going to be pre-service requirements that you must meet before you can be a teacher. And so I worry about the expense for folks. The options that we have now are less expensive. But also, universities being able to offer these courses at night so that teachers can teach during the day and offer online courses. And I know UNCA had a meeting about that very thing yesterday. A lot of universities aren't quite equipped for that yet. So I do list this as a challenge. I think eventually, we'll, you know, work the kinks out, but I think that it may present a challenge to us in the next year in terms of our hiring. So just something for you as a board to have on your radar. We may come back to you with an update or additional information about that. So a lot of information, I know. Do you have any questions for me? We appreciate your support.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
The lateral entry folks now, do they have to take, do they have to take Praxis?
Yes, they have to take a test.
So in addition to what was there, they have to do that?
Right.
And does the new thing that's coming in also require Praxis, pass the Praxis, and then in addition to that?
Right.
The other things that you had on?
Right. Right, basically, so if you've, like, the science is a good example. So you majored in biology and you went and worked for somebody, and then you decide you want to be a teacher and you come back. You've got to affiliate with that university and meet all the requirements of the university to get a teaching license, which will include taking and passing what the Praxis, the content exam.
And your difficulty in, I'm guessing, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that some of that will be predicated on where you attained that bachelor's degree. So that if you came to Asheville and wanted to affiliate with UNC Asheville and your bachelor's is from the state of Texas at an accredited institution, do they have to, do they have to grant credit for all those courses? Or is there a possibility that they may have to take something else other than just the educational courses?
And that would be up to the university. You know, it would be up to the university's program. But they would analyze your transcript for that very thing to see if what you've taken meets their content requirement as well as their licensing requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. I think we've absorbed just about as much knowledge as we can.
Sorry. I told you you might hate me for that.
I followed everything you said. Excuse me. Thank you very much for bringing Mr. Probst in his tie. Do we have a public comment tonight?
Madam Chair, there are no public comments.
Thank you very much. So now it's time for Deborah Frisbee in the audit reports. She brings with her an assistant.
Well, he's going to be giving the report. So I will introduce Mike Wyke with Anderson Smith and Wyke, who's going to be reviewing our financial statements for 2017-18.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, pleased to be here tonight. I was going to tell you, I'm very thankful I got to see the presentation for the Order of the Longleaf Pine. It was very impressive, so I was glad I got to be here for that. I'm going to present the audit report for Buncombe County Schools for the year ending June 30, 18. And I've got a PowerPoint here. I think each of you have the hard copies in front of you, but I'm going to try to hit the highlights here tonight. If any of you have any questions whatsoever, feel free to stop me at any point, and I'll do my best to answer those questions that you may have. The first thing I will look at, this is on page one, this is actually our opinion letter on the financial statements. And pleased to report, it's an unmodified opinion letter that's commonly referred to as a clean audit report. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements as your independent CPAs. And just to let you know, when we say unmodified, what that really means is there was nothing that came to our attention during the scope of our audit that would make us to say that the audit was in accordance with accounting standards, except for this modification. There were no exceptions on that. Then I'm going to skip, well, actually, on page three, I just want to point this out. If you ever have any questions in the future, our phone number is right there, so feel free to give me a call on those. I'm going to skip pages 14 through 13. That's the management discussion and analysis. And that's really something that we, within the report, we do not issue an opinion on the management discussion and analysis, an overall summary prepared by management. Really, I'm going to skip over to page 14, and this is the full accrual financial statements in front of you here. And if you remember, in past years, I've told you really not to manage off of this statement because this is the statement that includes your fixed assets and things like that. You're not going to go out and sell the school buildings and come up with cash to fund the ongoing operations. But this year, there was the largest change that I've ever seen in audits of school boards in my 25-year career, and it is reflected on these statements. You may remember, this was back in 2015, the district had to start recording a liability for the pension expense for the district. This year, the district had to start recording a liability, they call it OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. And what that really is, that's going to be your health insurance for retirees. So this year, we had to start booking those. The adjustment to your net position number, that's what I'm focusing here on the bottom, the adjustment to the beginning balances of net position was $370 million, just a very large number. And when you had the retirement portion, the pension portion, when that came into effect, it was $49 million. So you sit here and think about, said, well, how is the insurance so much higher than the pension portion? Because you know it's more expense in paying the pension out versus the insurance. These numbers are all reported net. And when I'm saying net, the actuaries come up with a calculation of what your future obligation is going to be for the projected benefits for the healthcare. And you come with this gross number, then you back out any investments you've got, and that comes up to your net liability. On the pension side, North Carolina is very proud, and they do a very good job compared to other states on the retirement side, where they're funded at about 90%. So what that means, if you've got $100 liability, there's $90 in the bank to pay for that, and your net liability is $10. On the OPEB, the post-employment insurance, it's funded at only 3%. So what that means, if there's $100 gross liability, you've got $3 in the bank to pay for it, so that net liability is 97. So that's really how it looks sort of disproportionate with the liability for the OPEB versus the retirement. In the end, just taking that a step further, that really is probably why the state had to cancel any future benefits for insurance for new employees after 2021, if y'all remember that rule took place this year. From an accounting standpoint, I can tell you that the math wasn't going to work out if you kept accruing those benefits to everyone on down the road. if you kept accruing those benefits to everyone on down the road. It would have worked if your contribution rate would have skyrocketed. It's 18% now. I've heard people say it was going to need to be between 30% or 50% if they kept the benefits at that same rate. So that's really what happened. One thing you may say is, why is Buncombe County Schools recording this liability of the districts we've did throughout the state? That's what the boards typically ask us on that, because Buncombe County Schools has no, you can't control the contribution rate into the plan. You can't control, control the benefits that's paid out to it. But in the end, the employees do receive a W too. They are employees of Buncombe County Schools and not the state, so therefore, the accounting requirements make these items be booked. And I can tell you, essentially, all I work on is school boards. Every school board in the state is experiencing this same thing. The adjustment for Wake and Charlotte Meck was in excess of $2 billion, just to give you an idea. So it'd just be prorated based on ADM, essentially. The one thing I can tell you, though, it is, those adjustments are very relevant if you're a city or a county where you can issue debt. The recent news came out, maybe a couple of months ago, about how upside down Chicago was with their OPEB and the retirement benefits. If you're thinking about buying bonds in that entity, that's very relevant. But the problem is, in my mind, the accounting standards just don't segregate or differentiate between a school board organization and the cities and counties. So in the end, sorry to take such a long time going over that item when there's nothing you can do to control it whatsoever, but it is such a very large number, if somebody looks down and sees a negative $87 million net position, they'll say, what's going on? That's, that's what's really happening, that's what's caused that number. Does that make sense to everyone? Because it is, again, it's the most significant change we've seen in the statements since we've been auditing those whatsoever. The next thing I'm going to go down to, though, is I'm going to look at your traditional fund statements, and nothing has changed on these from the past. I'm just moving down to page 17. And what I want to point out here is, I made some notes on this other page. All right. What I want to point out, if you look at the general fund, which is on the, the leftmost column, and I'm going to look down at the bottom, you're going to see an ending fund balance of about $7.1 million. That was a $3.3 million reduction from last year, looking at the fourth number from the bottom there. And really, what I want to point out to you, I've got this, that's where I have the data wrote down here. If you go back to 2014, I'm going to call out the fund balance positions from 14 down to 18. It went 13.5, down to 12.5, 11.3, 10.6, and now we're at 7.1, 7.2, something like that. The point is, I think that management is well aware of this reduction in fund balance, and the board's been well aware of this eating away of that. But with this trend that you can see going back to 14, essentially, you know, roughly a little bit less than half in, over the course of these years, clearly, we, we can't continue that trend going forward. You know, we're going to have to, to make some hard decisions, and I'm sure y'all are very much so aware of that going forward. But the fund balance is probably just that trend, we want to slow that down a little bit, is, would be our recommendation as your auditors. And again, I don't think we're, we're telling you anything you didn't know, but again, want to just make sure that, that we, we make everyone clearly aware of that.
If you provide a money tree with this audit, that'd be really good.
Oh, I'll tell you, Madam Chair, I mean, again, really, about all we do is audit school boards now as a firm, and we are seeing this so much throughout the state. You've got decreased-
So you give them money trees, and you don't give us any?
Yeah, I don't, I wish I had that. But, but you know, you're losing the ADM, the rising costs. We've talked about it in other years, the rising administrative costs, the, the contribution rates for the retirement. The state enacts the amount, but they don't fund the money that it takes for federally paid people, locally paid people. And, and we're really seeing that throughout the state.
So it would look like, based on what you're saying, then, that we've got about, if things continued on the trend they're going, we've got two, two and a half years of fund balance left?
It would be close to that. And, and the thing is, I think that we've always talked about this in the past, when you get that fund balance to so little of a balance, it's almost like the, just the person out in the community living paycheck to paycheck. And do you want to be running the educational system paycheck to paycheck? Or do you want to have a little bit in the bank where you can plan for the future? I mean, that, that's really how I look at the, to me, that's the significance of fund balance.
And, and so, from an accounting perspective, from, from as you look at us, what, what does, other than what you've just told us, would, would a firm in an audit in this type situation make a formal recommendation to a school system? Or just have this type of conversation?
Yeah.
Because it really doesn't fall within the-
It would be within our conversations, and this, this is what's interesting. The state gives guidance on what fund balances should be for cities and counties. They have not given any guidances for school boards. So that's where, without us having a specific authoritative guidance, it's harder for us to do anything in writing and say that. And, and then really, what I'm seeing throughout the state, it's, the dynamics are just so different from district to district. And in some areas, if you build a little bit of fund balance, then your funding sources may drop. And it's, it's just so difficult for me to, to really give you an honest answer or an informative answer on that. What I can tell you, though, is truthfully, the lower that fund balance goes, the less management ability you have as the board.
And when, when, when an outside entity from the Board of Education suggests that perhaps we don't need a fund balance, from a, from an accounting standpoint, what would your thought to that be?
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, it's, if you don't have fund balance, if something comes up, where are you going to get the money? You can't levy taxes.
Right.
So you're going to have to go ask somebody else with your handout to pay this, or make cuts. And today, what do you do to make cuts? How can you cut money at a school board? You cut people, right?
Cut people, yeah.
That's your only option.
And how important is a fund balance? And it probably varies from the size of system, the system that you deal with. To me, one of the big things has always been, and Ms. Frisbee's expressed this to us before, but your thoughts on having a certain level of fund balance and cash flow there to, to meet your debt obligations, because you don't receive your monies coming from state, federal government, variety of places, all at the same time. So there's got to be some importance to that, I would think, or, or correct me if I'm wrong.
Very much so. You have to have that. I mean, in the simplistic form of what you're saying is, you want to make sure you're not balancing checks when you haven't got the, the funds coming in from the federal government, because they're a little bit slower getting the budgets approved. And then you can have different issues with the timing of your supplements. Items like that may come in month to month. So it's, to us, it is vital, and, and we're accountants, we're going to be conservative. You know, definitely, we're, we're strong advocates of building some fund balance.
Do you advocate a particular percentage? Or do you just advocate, be as frugal as you can and keep some there?
That's, that's where the state won't give us any information, but let me, and it's hard for us to just come out and say that, but, but I do want to point this out, because you're, we're getting into some very interesting information.
This is my pet peeve, if you haven't noticed.
We're probably on the same page. What I'm, I went back here to show you your fund statements, and-
What page are you on?
Yeah. What I look at, I look at your general fund, your state public school fund, the money coming from DPI in Raleigh, your other special revenue fund, which is your fund date that we're aware of. And then over, we got the next column, other governmental funds. That includes your federal money. If you see that, the, the federal money's going to be 14.8 million. But in the end, this is your revenues that you get as the district on what I call your instructional funds. So if you add up, I'll just do it in my head here, try to be accurate if, if we can, 63 million from, from Buncombe County and local, you've got 140 million of state, so what's that, 205? Add five for other special, so you're at 210?
Tell me what page you're on again, so I can make sure I'm looking at it the right place.
17.
17.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
I thought you changed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I did. We backed up a little.
Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, good deal.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
I'll see it.
So really, that's where I'm going to cross that, your, your instructional funds. So I think we were up to 210. If you take the federal money, you're going to be at two and a quarter. So roughly, you've got $225 million coming in to Buncombe County Schools for educational purposes. Now, if you, to, to me and you, probably 7 million of your fund balance of the general fund, that's a large number. And if someone wanted to do calculations, they can make it look a certain way if they compared the 7 million solely to the 63 million coming in from Buncombe County. You know, it looks, you know, you're over 10% there, that looks pretty solid. But you can't carry fund balance in the state or federal monies.
Right.
If you get cuts in the state, where does that money come from?
Your fund balance.
Or, or more from the local.
Or it's got to come from the local.
Right. One of the two. So that's where I say, if you're going to do any fund balance calculations, you've got to factor in these other funding sources, that you have to have fund balance to cover any actions there that you can't control.
Got you. Thank you.
Let me see. The next thing I was going, going to go down to is look at your, your child nutrition program. And this is another quirk of the OPEB requirements. On the balance sheet and income statements for the child nutrition program, and this is going to be pages 22, 23, and really, I'll go up to 24. You have to book the OPEB liability on the face of the child nutrition statements down on the balance sheet. So it really makes those hard to read and, and to comprehend. If you look on page 22, you're going to see a, a negative position of over $4 million. That's why what I got pulled up on the screen here is on page 24, is your cash flow. And the second number from the bottom shows that, that you added $70 million of cash. And essentially, you have to manage child nutrition now just off of the cash is king adage. If you're paying your indirect cost, which is, which you are here at Buncombe County Schools, and adding a little bit of cash, I, I think the child nutrition program's doing pretty well. And that's, now I'm going to go over the compliance section of the audit. That's all I was going to go over on the numbers portion, unless someone has questions for me at this time on that.
Board, do you have questions?
On the numbers. And then on the, on the compliance portion, then, just to go over that with you quickly. You, each of you should have a, a shorter bound copy. And within this, you're going to see three opinion letters. One is on the overall internal control and compliance at the district. One is on internal control and compliance specifically as it relates to federal money, and one specifically as it relates to, to state money. On all three of these opinions, we issued an unmodified or clean audit report on those, so no issues noted there. You can have what's called a financial statement finding would be, an item would be an isolated instance of an internal control weakness or compliance violation, and still have a clean report. We noted no such findings this year either during the scope of our audit. You will see an additional page, a one-page management letter. This would be something that would be an, an internal control type issue, but it is of less significance. We still have to report it, but it's not required to be in the bound report, and we noted two items this year on that. One, at one of the schools that we tested, they were holding deposits a little longer than they should be, and, you know, we communicated that to management, and I think they've already taken steps to look into that and make sure that that's remedied going forward. Then in addition, on one of the, the termination payouts that we tested, we noted that the individual was paid out of the general fund, and they should have been paid out of the state fund. The significance of that, it's, it's more than just a, it's, it's really not large dollars, but the significance is, if you can pay the person out of state, you need to pay them out of state to make sure you take advantage of those state funds versus paying it out of your general fund that we talk about. But, but in the end, in the, in the scheme of things, those are relatively small items. One thing, I just wanted to add, going back again to how many school boards that we do, we have, between me and my other partners, we've noticed a trend this year, not at every district, but we're seeing more findings versus less findings. And, and here, this is less than what we've seen in the past. And on a lot of our districts, they're more significant than what we've seen in the past. We've, I've still got three audits that haven't been issued this year, which is, just really uncommon for me. If we don't get them issued, it's because the client's not giving us the data they need, and it's, really, that just doesn't happen. So in the end, I just want to point that out to you, that this is a very good report from the internal control standpoint, and I think, you know, the board should be proud of that, and, and finance department, as well as any of the departments that we look at, because, you know, we look at more than just the finance department during the scope of our testing. So we're very appreciative of the cooperation we get, and I think that the district should be proud of those results.
So can you just clarify that again?
Yeah.
What, so when we look in the bound report, it says there are no findings, and then there's this separate letter which had, which lists the two things that you talked about. So are these findings, or are they just kind of, y'all need to check on?
Yeah, that's it. They call them management letter comments.
So these are not actually findings, then?
They're not findings, no. The, the technical definition, when something goes in, in the bound report as a true finding, there's, there's very specific federal guidelines that we have to follow. And in the end, it has to be an internal control weakness where we think it could result in significant loss of cash, or a, a true loss of cash being a compliance issue where monies were spent inappropriately in excess of $25,000. So that's what goes in that. Other, what's deemed less significant items will be reported in the management letter.
Because I, I would just like to say in regular human English that this is amazing, that we have such a huge and complicated budget, and so many expenditures, and so many places where we're handling money, and so many different schools, and we have no findings.
It's a good staff.
I mean, I, yes.
Excellent staff.
I mean, this is, it's the first time since I've been on the board that this has happened, and I, I feel like it's really significant, and we need to recognize it.
It was a very good report. And you've got the continuity of staff, of continuity of quality staff. That's, I was speaking to Ms. Frisbee earlier today when, as we were meeting. Within two, the past two years, I've had five of my districts turn over a finance officers. I mean, you're just seeing more and more of that throughout the state, and, and that leads to the issues that we're seeing. So that's, definitely not to take away of the, the performance, but that contributes to the, the results.
The bucking the trends, that's good. Well, thank you for, questions from board members?
I have a question regarding the fund balance issue that you delved into, and I think, maybe following up on Pat's line of thinking. A management letter stating basically what you have shared with us, would that be an appropriate request to have you to construct and share with this board?
That's probably something that, within our accounting rules, we are your, I always, I'll tell you the opinion we issue, that we're your independent CPAs. Us telling you amounts to having your fund balance, you know, I, I can say that we would recommend more, or we recommend the, the reason for having a, a good, solid, sound fund balance. But, but more specific than that, it sort of gets, we're really close to crossing the line between, are we auditing what we're doing, or are we telling you to do something, and then us audit that?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what you'd be telling us to do it.
Yeah.
But I would wonder if you stated good accounting practice, or good practice might be to hold, you, you see, you see a constant decline, and as pointed out, three and a half years at this pace, it's exhausted.
I can certainly do that. I can certainly do that, where we result on the, the trend that we're seeing. I mean, that, that would be very, very easy to do that.
I, I think that, and I, I ask you, Madam Chair, if that would be appropriate, I would like to bring that to a vote at this board, if necessary.
Is it necessary that we vote on that?
No.
I mean, I can, I can do that easily.
That's it, done.
Okay. Would you please?
Yeah, I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yep.
All right, anyone else? Well, thank you for your report, and especially thank you to our staff and the work that they do, which gives us a good report.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank y'all.
The next item on the agenda is the action agenda, and it's the Board Amendment Number Two, Deborah Frisbee. Get to show off in front of the auditor now. Who's leaving?
He's gone.
Do you want to talk to him? Okay, we have a motion to approve the Budget Amendment Number One.
Number Two.
Number Two.
Number Two. I hope it says two.
It does.
It's two.
Number Two. Number Two. Do we have questions from the board?
Do you need a motion first, Madam Chair?
Uh, do we? Do we approve it and then get questions?
Motion, get a second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve?
You don't have one yet.
Ah, geez.
Ah, geez.
But I'd be proud to make it for you, Madam Chair.
Tell me what to say.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve budget amendment number two as presented this evening.
Okay, whatever he said.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And all those in favor?
Hi.
Oh, jeez. Now, now do we have any questions?
Good.
I'm worried about reading this next item on this agenda, if you want to know what's going on over here. No, anybody have any questions? All right, then, I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item, oh, this is Mr. Fairley, who wrote a paragraph on here. Haw Creek Elementary School additions and renovations project, approval of design team and CMAR recommendations.
Do you need a motion?
I suppose I do.
I would make a motion that we approve this as recommended.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Fairley?
I have one, it kind of ties into both. So, so we've got two different schools involved, but we have some, some connectivity in these two projects, I think, because of what we're moving from Fairview to Haw Creek. Am I, have I got that right?
That's correct.
And we've, we're, we've got recommendations tonight, probably supposed to have, and it may be best, we've got four different entities. We've got two different companies, two different CMARs. Is there any reason for concern with that? Or, or what is the logistics of getting those things? Do those projects have to complete at the same time to make that transition, and moving students from one location to another work? And do we foresee any problem with that, or is this something that happens normally?
Well, there is interconnectivity, as you said, and the, the work at Haw Creek and the addition must happen before we can begin the Fairview renovations.
They will not be going on simultaneously. One will-
Phase two of Haw Creek will be occurring when the only phase of Fairview is going on, so they will be going on simultaneously. But Haw Creek needs to start first.
So you don't anticipate any problem with being able, that's just going to sound wrong.
This is construction.
He anticipates all the problems.
I, I just, do we, I just want to make sure, we probably couldn't have, but would there be value to having the same company do both projects versus what's being recommended here tonight?
Well, there's pluses and minuses to that. You, if you have the same company, you may be stretching that company a bit thin. If they do well, that's great. If they don't do well, it's, hits you twice. So the selection committee also felt it was a good thing to, I guess, I'll, I'll use the term that one of our selection committee members used to kind of deepen our bench in architects and CMAR contractors. We are a public entity, and we do projects over time, and to you put all your eggs in one basket all the time, maybe doesn't make sense, so it helps us for the future. And there's also, there's kind of a friendly competition when you have multiple projects going on, and multiple designers and contractors, they, they kind of want to outdo each other, if you will, and that's an advantage.
I, I just hearken back to when we were doing, and it's, I'm, I think it's probably completely different, but I know we had issues when we had two intermediate schools going on at the same time. Different building climate, different economic climate, I get that. And I'm sure that was, that, that was what came to my head when I saw this. We really can't, we're really not making a choice to deepen the pool, because we've got to award the low bidder that's a responsible bidder. So, correct or incorrect?
In this, in the CMAR process and the architectural selection process, it's a qualification-based selection process, it's not a low bid process. You make selections based on the qualifications and the appropriateness of the fit, as you see it, and then you negotiate with that number one selection. If you can't come to terms, then you move to number two and number three. That's why you see the alternates.
Why you've already got the alternates in place. Okay.
Tim, was the, Ebling, Coontz, was that a prototype? Is that why architect design?
It was almost all economic.
Mike Cox had both those, or?
Yeah, we-
Just to-
We made the decision to try to use basically the same design, so that made sense to use the same architect.
So it wasn't a prototype school, though?
Not that we probably would repeat again. We had two unique sites, but there were certain similarities between them that we thought we could make that work, and that was an advantage for consistency across, but I wouldn't call them prototypes, no. We probably wouldn't build those exactly like that today.
The issues there, as I recall, came actually once we were in construction, in terms of-
The economy was on those-
It was all economy-related at the time.
It really was.
Right.
We, we lost a lot of subcontract, the, the GCs lost a lot of subcontractors to bankruptcy-
Right.
-at that time. And that's the root of the problem there.
Not where we are now.
No.
No.
Other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
We, we already have a motion, don't we?
Do we?
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, now we can vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will put all of this airheadedness at the foot of cold medicine. Or maybe the lack of it. Next item is also Mr. Fairley, and this is Fairview Elementary additions and renovations projects, approval of the design team and the CMAR recommendations.
If you need, if you need a motion.
I do need, I need a motion, thank you.
This is my district, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve this recommendation as well.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I would just like to make a comment, having served on the committee that looked at both of these, and, and the in-depth conversation that we had about the process and CMAR versus bidding, and, and how you select the different levels. I was very impressed with the, just the level of thought and our expertise in the room, and really appreciate both Tim and Clark and, and all you bring to that process, so thank you.
I would like to also comment, being on that same panel, in that there were numerous, numerous well-qualified applicants that we, we reviewed. And I think the folks that were looking and reviewing the material on the committee read it very thoroughly, and I, I think the decisions that were made were not without lots of thought and discussion. Very comfortable with that. And I think as, from the standpoint of our board, is we're very fortunate, we had so mu- so much response, people wanting to do work with Buncombe County Schools, and I think that bodes well, and points back to the leadership in that department.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, we're the Buncombe County Early and Middle College calendar, the draft. Do we have questions from the board? Well, could I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move, we, we approve the draft calendar for Buncombe County Early and Middle College presented here this evening.
Thank you. Do I get, have a second?
I'll second.
All right, now do you have questions for Ms. Swanger? Who's standing ready?
So I ask this question every year, but just to get it in the record. So this is, the, the school year starts a lot earlier than the other calendar, and that's so that it aligns with AB Tech's calendar, is that correct?
Correct. Early college and middle college operate under the Cooperative Innovative legislation that gives them that flexibility, and it's perfect for them to align closer to AB Tech's schedule.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the consent agenda, thank you, Ms. Swanger, we have the minutes from the December 6th regular meeting, open session, and the personnel report.